July 9th, 2020, at 4 o'clock. And I'd like to call this the morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to tell you that our representative is actually joining us virtually, because she is on a vacation. But I'm going to do this.
The President of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before you a recommended agenda. Are there any changes in your decision to do this? We'll recommend a change. Darla, in fact, can you see Darla, could you do us?
I'm here.
Okay, we voted in the interim. Do you vote yes?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm sorry about you. Our action item tonight is the approval of Forsyth County Schools' guidelines for reopening the school. You definitely understand this. We need to be comfortable with this.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. And I hope it's okay if I remove my mask so everybody can hear me out in the audience. And we have a lot of people joining us virtually. And I want to make sure that they get the information that they need. I also want to thank everyone for joining us this afternoon. As you know, our schools are scheduled to reopen on Thursday, August 6th, four weeks from today. This year, we are offering our parents a choice of attending virtually or face-to-face. While we're working very hard to create a virtual experience and mirrors face-to-face instruction, I want to be very clear that I believe our children need to be back in school. The social aspect of school is very important. The social and emotional well-being of our students is critical, and obviously also is their health. I'm extremely proud and grateful for the heroic work of our teachers last spring. I'm appreciative of how our parents served as their child's coach during the fourth quarter, and I was impressed by the high level of engagement by the majority of our students. In summary, I feel like we did the best we could, given the situation we were in. However, to serve our students best, we need them to be on campus. In order to meet their needs, we need them to be at school. And their needs are academic, social, emotional, and nutritional, just to name a few. Having said that, I respect that some of our parents are not yet ready to send their children back to school. That is why we are preparing an alternative, giving all parents in Forsyth County a choice. I also respect that some parents are not going to agree with our guidelines. They too have a choice in how their children learn from home. And for those that make that choice, we will strive to serve their children well. As you know, I attended a meeting at the White House earlier this week on how we can reopen America's schools safely. One reason I accepted that invitation was to hear firsthand from health experts on the topic, especially the wearing of a mask or a face covering. This is by far the most debated issue facing American schools as we prepare to reopen safely. In attendance at my meeting at the White House was Secretary of Health and Human Services Alex Azar, Dr. Deborah Burks, the Coronavirus Response Coordinator, Dr. Robert Redfield, CDC Director, and Dr. Sally Goza, President of American Academy of Pediatrics. All four health officials sent the very same clear message: When in public and we're not able to social distance, we should all wear a mask or a face covering. Our schools in Forsyth County are sometimes very crowded, but they're certainly very public places. As I have stated numerous times, schools and school furniture were not designed for social distancing. They were designed to be collaborative workspaces, and rightfully so. Last week, Dr. Goza and her team from the American Academy of Pediatrics issued a press release that stated that even at three feet apart, if students and staff are wearing face coverings, it reduces the likelihood of transmission. Also in that press release, pediatricians agree that our children need to return to school face-to-face, and I agree as well. While no single set of actions that we may take can completely eliminate the risk, our guidelines around reopening our schools are intended to mitigate the risk. Earlier this week, my staff met with Dr. Pamela Logan from the Georgia Department of Health. Dr. Logan contributed to our revised draft guidelines and has endorsed the guidelines as I'm presenting them to you tonight. I'll review all of our guidelines shortly, but I will start with the one that's garnering the most attention. I am recommending that we expect all students and staff to wear a mask or a face covering. As stated earlier, health officials throughout the country are consistent in their messaging that when in public, we should all wear a mask. Like you, I have heard from hundreds of parents on both sides of this issue, and I respect that. We're talking about the health of their children. I have three children myself, and I can guarantee you I will defend my child as well. So I have nothing but respect for the parents who are reaching out to us. While I was unable to respond to every message, I read every one of them. You have read them all, and I appreciate that, and our community should appreciate that. We have listened. Our board members have responded as often as they could. But the opinions vary greatly, as we know. I have heard from parents and children who have asthma and other health issues that are telling me their children simply cannot wear a mask for long periods of time are not at all. Some of these same parents are telling me that the virtual option is simply not a viable option for their family. Some staff members have told me they have health issues that would prohibit them from wearing a mask for long periods of time are not at all. I'm not going to question that. I'm going to accept our parents and staff members at their word. That is why I am opposed to the word "require" when it comes to wearing a mask. If you approve these guidelines, we will not discipline students or staff for not wearing a mask. We will not have incentives in place for students to wear a mask. But what we will do is we will positively promote why wearing a mask in public is so important. My staff and I will model that expectation. The case for wearing a mask while in public and while we are unable to social distance has been very well articulated and documented in the medical community. With that, I'd like to go over some of the specific guidelines. And just for the sake of our audience, I want to remind you that we have a Restart Forsyth webpage on our website that we will keep updated on a continuous basis. And I would urge all of our families to refer to that website first, because there will be lots of information that we continue to include. I've already spoke a little bit, quite a bit, about students and staff and the expectation that they will wear a mask. I want to go on to say that our transportation and food service employees, they are required to wear a mask in the presence of students if they are unable to social distance. In terms of hands, we've all heard this repeatedly since the pandemic broke back in March. Frequent hand washing is critical, and we will have frequent hand washing reminders and daily breaks so that students may wash their hands for a minimum of 20 seconds. We have purchased hand sanitizer stations, portable stations, to be used throughout each of our buildings. Students are encouraged, if parents opt to make this choice, we certainly cannot force it. Students are encouraged to bring their own hand sanitizer. We ask that they not share. We also ask that parents consider allowing their students to bring their own devices from home so that we can hopefully go to more of a one-to-one device for students who do not have them. We do not want our students sharing devices if we can avoid it. And also, we are going to limit the sharing of school supplies. In terms of our cleaning, our facility staff and purchasing department has purchased enough cleaning supplies to last us for at least 18 months. We were very proactive in making that happen. We will increase cleaning and disinfection schedules in all buildings. We will close all traditional water fountains. The water fill stations that we have in our schools will remain open, but we are encouraging all students and staff to bring their own water from home. Our ventilation systems already exceed expectations, standards, but we will monitor them consistently to ensure proper operation and increase circulation of outdoor air. In terms of health, our school nurse is going to be a key player in each of our schools. They are the main point of contact for our families and our staff, and we will outfit all of our school nurses with appropriate PPE, personal protection equipment. We will have periodic health screenings and random temperature checks if COVID-19 cases are present. And I want to tell you, this statement came directly from our Department of Health as a recommendation. Individuals with COVID-19 symptoms or a temperature of 100.4 and above will be isolated and sent home as soon as possible. In terms of our logistics, again, these are recommendations from Department of Health and the CDC. We will limit the visitors, volunteers, and gatherings. Anyone who enters our building must wear a mask and must agree to a temperature check before they are allowed in. We are certainly limiting the amount of times this will happen. Physical distancing practice will limit it and alternative plans for movement. And I know parents have a lot of questions around how that's going to happen in their child's individual school. I encourage parents to reach out to their school principals to ask how their principals are aligning the day-to-day operations with district guidelines. They are all responsible for creating plans that align with our district guidelines. And the reason we cannot create a set of plans, we have 40 campuses in Forsyth County. Mashburn Elementary School is not the same physical plant as Lambert High School. I need the Mashburn administration to create a plan that works for Mashburn. I need the Lambert administration to create a plan that works for Lambert. Online meal payment is encouraged. Getting lots of questions about athletics and activities. The Georgia High School Association is responsible for giving us guidance and setting guidelines, and we will follow the guidelines of Georgia High School Association. In terms of bus safety, masks are required for drivers and once again, expected for students. Physical distancing cannot be achieved on school buses. Buses will be cleaned and disinfected after every single route, and if parents and guardians are concerned about their child being transported on a bus, we do encourage our parents and guardians to transport their children to and from school if possible. Some important information on this slide. We are asking our staff and families to do daily temperature checks prior to leaving for school or work. If a student or staff member tests positive for COVID-19, the Department of Public Health will be notified immediately for guidance on the next steps. Letters will be sent home to notify parents and guardians of positive COVID-19 cases in the classroom. And quarantined students will have access to their education through its learning. Public health signage will be displayed and shared to reinforce guidance. I want to add to this slide. The issue of a mask or not a mask is the number one issue that I hear. The number two issue I hear from parents is what are the specific guidelines from the Department of Health in case we have cases of COVID-19 in our school system? And we had a great conversation with them the other day. And the answer is, it's situational. It will depend on the school where the student or staff member works. And let me just give you an example. If we have a case of COVID-19 in a second-grade classroom, and all of the students in that classroom are self-contained, meaning they don't go to other teachers throughout the course of the day other than specials, then it's likely that the Department of Health will say, you need to shut down that classroom and quarantine those students for a period of time. But you do not have to shut the entire school. You do not have to shut the entire school system. It really is situational. And this was very clear from Dr. Redmond from the CDC earlier this week. He made the statement that last spring, it was not the CDC's recommendation that school districts closed. That came from governors throughout the nation. He wasn't being critical of that decision. He just said that was not a CDC recommendation. And he made it very clear in our meeting the other day that he thinks schools can safely reopen. And yes, when we do have cases of COVID-19, we need to respond accordingly, but it doesn't mean we have to shut an entire school or the entire school system. It will depend, once again, is it a staff member? Is it a student? Does the student have siblings? Does a staff member have a sibling, our spouse that works in our school system? We have to go through each one of those on a case-by-case basis. Our Student Support Services will handle that relationship with the Department of Health. Every time we get a case of COVID-19, and we will communicate with the Department of Health, and we will follow whatever guidelines they give us in terms of closing a classroom, closing a corridor, closing an entire school, closing a couple of schools. And I hope we don't get to the situation that we were in last spring where we have to close the entire school district. But standing here today, I can't promise anybody that that won't happen. It will depend on the rate of transmission in our community. So I hope that helps clear up somewhat. I wish I could give a very clear step-by-step, here's what's going to happen if we have a case based on information from the Department of Health. But again, when we had that conversation the other day, they made it very clear, they can't give us that. It's all going to be situational. It will depend on the student, the grade level, how many are impacted, and that will determine the advice we're given in terms of next steps. So in conclusion, and then I want to turn it over to you for any questions or comments you might have. We are working on a list of frequently asked questions that should be on our website Monday. We're taking all the information we're getting from families, and we're trying to make sure we're as thorough as possible with those frequently asked questions. We will update those regularly up until and after school reopens. I want to remind our community, we have another virtual town hall meeting tomorrow at noon for K-5 parents who may be interested in that K-5 virtual options. I will tell you, as of today, we have about 2,500 students that we expect to be learning in the K-5 virtual environment. Parents who have already committed to that option, that obviously helps us in some ways because it takes away students from campuses. It enables us to better move throughout the building and stay spaced apart. But parents, again, have until July 14th to make the final decision on K-5 virtual. And that's the reason we moved this meeting to tonight, because we had parents who wanted to see the final guidelines first before they made their final decision. And of course, we all respected that. But again, we need that information by July 14th because, as you know, just reminding our community, we are going to have to pull classroom teachers to teach in the virtual environment, and we need to know by next week how many teachers we're going to need to pull so we can adequately staff our virtual and face-to-face instruction. In terms of Forsyth Virtual Academy, which has been in existence for a number of years now, that serves students in grades 6 through 12. Those parents have until July 31st. The reason they have a longer period of time, that school is already in existence. We already have adjunct staff members that teach at Forsyth Virtual. So that is not as big of a challenge to staff Forsyth Virtual as it is to staff the K-5, which the K-5 is brand new for our school system. We've never done that before. So with that, at this time, I'd certainly welcome any comments or questions that board members may have to take to vote on this issue.
All right. Thank you, Doug. That was a good, uh, your chat. Having read the draft of ACQ, which I think is a nice addition to the guidelines, it went on to say, which I thought was helpful, as far as if a student or staff person does test positive for COVID, the Department of Health will also let that person know when they can return to the classroom.
That's correct. And to be clear, that's not a Forsyth County Schools' decision. That's a Department of Health decision.
I think that makes sense because they have access not to just our information.
That's correct.
They have access to other counties around us so they could see. We just might have an isolated case, but we might, especially towards the edge of our borders of our county, there might be something going on that's not aware of us. It might be worse than what we know.
Correct.
Or better. So they're the point person. That's why we need to go through that.
That is correct.
Right, that's helpful. A lot of the masks, obviously, are not happening. For those parents that were not as concerned about the mask, there were parents who were concerned about elementary children not being wise enough to use the mask properly, touching and things like that. Are our teachers or more so maybe our nurses the first few days of school, are they going to maybe spend some time with the elementary kids in high school as well? Maybe reminding them the proper way to put the mask on, maybe not the fuss with it? Is there going to be any kind of...
Not only the proper way to wear a mask, but the why behind why we need to wear a mask. Oftentimes, it's really not about our own personal health and well-being. It's about respect for the personal health and well-being of the people you're working around. You know, it's the same reason we're asked now when we go out into the stores. Maybe we don't have a medical condition, and maybe nobody in our family has a pre-existing condition. We have no idea who we might encounter during the course of the day. And so, wearing a mask, which has been well documented, is more about being respectful of one another.
They're getting part of the little gifts, you know, they can't be touching.
And again, you know, we're going to try to do things. We will try to get outside as much as possible and things like that to try to make this as doable as it possibly could, can be. I will say, Dr. Burks, when I was at the White House the other day, she gave the example, she has a, I think she's had a two-year-old grandchild, and that they have practiced with her two-year-old grandchild on the wearing of a mask. And she says, it's amazing how resilient young children are if you just take the time to properly show them, you know, how to wear one, that even a child as young as the age of two or three can wear one.
Yes, I got a few votes. As a fan parent, I know that there's been a lot of questions about ban and drama and course. And I know that there's a study coming out from Colorado about that topic that we've all been waiting on. And just to back up, I know that we've been working on the system-wide guidelines, but the principals at each level have been working about their individual schools as well as our fine arts department have been working. So in the background, there's been a lot of preparation on what the guidelines will be free to go. So those are out there, they've been working on that. And I do know, having talked to the individual departments, that when it comes to ban and the dramas, they're following the DHSA guidelines and doing similar as far as doing these smaller things, following some of the rules. So the parents that have been waiting on that, do probably similar guidelines. There is a lot of the thought being put into that.
Correct. And thank you for pointing that out because it is true. Each of our departments are working on how do we make this work within the guidelines of our school system that they're adopted tonight? So we have our fine arts people, what is that going to look like in the ban room? What would that look like in the art room? Maybe, and I'm not committing to this because we're still talking about, maybe the art teacher in the elementary school will come to the classroom instead of the teachers, I mean, the students going to the art room. And maybe we have, you know, have students have their own art supplies and they don't share. Same with our media centers. They're all talking about how to make that work. You know, our physical education teachers, you know, they're talking about, okay, how do we make physical education work if we don't have access to equipment or supplies? There are certainly things you can do in terms of physical fitness where you don't necessarily need any equipment. So each one of those departments, district-wide, are working on finalizing those plans. Granted, I don't have those to announce to you tonight. We don't start school until four weeks from today, but those will all be in place as we move forward, and we'll add those to our frequently asked questions.
And they will, they're well underway.
Oh, absolutely, working on. But again, just to remind folks, you know, our teachers are out on summer recess right now, and so a lot of this conversation will obviously happen when they come back for pre-planning as well.
Just real quick on that note, if I'm a parent, I need to make a decision by next Friday if I'm going to have my son attend a recce or virtually. Do I need to or can I contact the principal to see what the current plan is for their school? Could these schools...
Yeah, and remember, the deadline's July 14th, not next Friday. But I, again, as I said earlier, and you make a great, great point, if a parent has a specific question about a school and how a school day is going to look, our principals are all back to work. Please call the school. They will talk with you and talk through their plans as they're putting them together because they're all working on the logistics of the day-to-day. You know, how do we move students? How do we feed students? Where are we going to feed students? All to try to stay within the guidelines that we've established.
I did that, yeah. It's like Lambert, Luntz, or what they're going to look like, you know, be all in the hallways. So I have those questions. Remember, like last night, that was a capability, Urban had cut into the one-way transition in the hallways that was left in the classroom. So each school's looking at it individually.
And some other examples, and again, I'm not committing to all these, but these are things we're talking about. High school principals are talking about block scheduling. So if you block schedule, that will limit movement because you're taking a course every other day and you're not changing every 45 minutes. Middle schools are talking about block schedule. Elementary schools, now, my wife is a fifth-grade teacher. She team teaches with somebody. In years past, the kids would change classes. This year, the teachers will probably change classes, and the students will stay put. So every school has their own nuances in terms of schedules, and so they're all working to develop a schedule that will work within the guidelines that were established.
Since we're talking about question, will there still be an avenue to go online like ONTO Forsyth, Restart Forsyth to put those questions in? So we obviously get lots of questions, whether we need to pass those questions on or...
There's a place right now.
And we continue to...
Many, many of our citizens are well aware of where that is located because we get lots of questions. And again, you know, I say that, you know, somewhat humorously because I hope we can all still laugh, and, you know, we're all going to work together and still be, still be a family. And let me just say, you know, we all know this is a contentious issue. We all get that. But the thing I've always loved about working in this community, and this will be my seventh year serving as your superintendent, and you guys know, this isn't my first rodeo. I've worked in other school systems and in other states. I've never worked anywhere where a community was more connected in terms of supporting public education. And I realize that this is a contentious issue, and there's lots of opinions on this. But I hope when the dust settles, we go back to where we were before, and we're all together, rowing the boat in the same direction. We may not always agree, but surely we can all agree that our kids deserve a quality experience and quality education, and we're going to strive to continue doing that. And I hope our families will continue to work together to make that happen.
Two more things. I know ACQs will be counting out. As we get questions, those ACQs will be continuously updated.
Yes.
So if we get a question more than one time, we'll let them know and keep putting that on, or so will, if people keep asking, we'll update that.
And for those listening, Jennifer's our public information officer, and she's the one that keeps all the information updated. Yes.
And last thing, I know, we opened up a sign-up for the K-5 virtual, I'll be here sold out, people signed up, and then we had the town hall, and then they stepped through with a day in the life of a K-5 could look like. And it's a whole day. And I had a couple of parents reach out to me, and once they saw that whole day, they kind of had to reconsider. If a parent signed up early and then after seeing what it's like, reconsidered, and they don't want to opt out now, what's the best way for them to unsubscribe?
Contact us and let us know through, through the Public Information Office where they signed up. You have until July 14th to make your final decision. You certainly have the right to change your mind.
Just let me have the same way.
Yeah, just let us know.
Sitting here, I can't reiterate it enough. I watched the town hall the other day. It was excellent. It really did. She literally walked through, 8:00, we'll have attendance, and there was a break in there for snack, and there was a break for lunch because you had PE or you had art and you had specials. The whole day was outlined, and it was excellent. And it really does, I think these parents need to know that ahead of time, to be realistic. And if they need, it was also something to talk about, you know, if you have three children, you only have one computer, please let us know. I know that's all on the form when you're filling that out, so that's all important. But we don't want to be a fan if they're not, if they have to go virtually. We don't want any, you know, anything inhibiting them from having a good education because they don't have the experience.
Yeah, you make a good point. For parents who have not had a chance to listen to that recording, again, I encourage you to attend tomorrow. But if you can, it's on our website, and you listen to the recording. The one thing we learned from parents last spring is we need to do more synchronous instruction, which means live instruction with our students, and that will happen in K-5 virtual. Now, we don't want our students on the screen for six and, six and a half hours a day. That's why we saw the day in the life of a student, there's breaks in there so they get away from, from their screen. But there will be a lot more direct synchronous instruction than what parents saw last spring.
Yeah, for me, it was, you know, we've experienced one of the big tragedies of our generation, you know, whether it was 9/11. You remember where we were there when we shut more up? All of those big societal things. This is another one of them. I'm proud of our, our community, but we just got the data from the Department of Health today showing we're about 0.4% infection rate. So for us, we've done a good job of not spreading virus. I'm proud. So I'm proud of our community as far as that. And we've always said flexibility, right? Because we're a good kid. So we're in the process of trying to do that together as a village. And continue to be our community, continue to do those smart things we've been doing for the last three months. But at the time, we got over five, six months out of school. These students need to get their brains re-engaged because the students that are involved down the town, they need to start learning. And that's more important than anything. So we keep that at the center of what we're doing here is their education and their safety. And we've been doing safety for a while now. It's became another one of the key moments in our generation that we had to deal with. So safety is important and ultimate. And we're going to do all the things to the nth degree, trust us. We're partnering with the parents to create that bridge for that student. So they have the best experience and they come out the other end. As the learn profile shows, that's what we want. And the student hopefully will come out the other end with that hope to get their social, emotional, keep you going again. This has been an emotional time for them. And we're thinking very strategically about that. Get that back online to help the parents to bring it not to be as scary as the thing, even though it is scary time. So those are my comments. We've been working on these guidelines and that's all they are. The flexibility, we try to give an offer of flexibility to every student's situation, take a case. If you're still unsure, reach out to the right people. The building leaders and we'll help make that decision. Get them to follow that as far as that.
You know, you touched on this, Mr. Cleveland. I think it's worth reiterating. One of the tragedies of the coronavirus and having students not physically at school is we have seen a decrease in the number of cases of abuse being reported, cases of neglect being reported, cases of nutritional neglect being reported. And that's not because those number of cases have been reduced. It's because students aren't on our campus right now and we cannot reach our students and we do not know what they're dealing with. And one of the reasons, and this was, this isn't me talking. This came from the health experts the other day that I was at that meeting. One of the reasons folks are so adamant our children need to be back in school, many of them require services beyond the academic services. And we cannot begin to provide the services for those children in need. And some of them are suffering. Some of them are suffering from abuse and neglect and nutritional neglect. And for a lot, I shouldn't say for a lot, but for some of our students, even in Forsyth County, as affluent as we are, as fortunate as we are, 15% of our students live in poverty. And they rely on us for breakfast and lunch. And right now, we're missing out on those kids. And so, you know, it's imperative that we get our kids back face-to-face so we can take care of the whole child. We talk about the whole child all, all the time. You know, one parent asked me earlier, you know, shouldn't your decision be based on, number one priority isn't the health of our students? Well, of course, but you can't take that in isolation. If that's the only factor we considered, we would never have our kids come back to school. We'd have them live in shelter forever. And we know that's not the right thing to do. So I can't just look at the health of our children. I have to look at the mental health, the social health, nutritional well-being. We have to take that, the whole child into consideration. That's why we're making the recommendation we are. We realize some parents aren't comfortable and we get it. So we're going to give you a choice, K through 12. You have a choice. And we're going to do the best we can to provide those services. But I certainly hope we can bring our children back to school on August 6th.
You know, we need to practice on the guidelines that we've always had in place, you know. Students come to school sick all the time. And because sickness is not as critical as this, we haven't really dealt with that. I think it's time to deal with that. If you're, if you're in the city, stay home. That's, that's the only mandate I can give you tonight. It's if you're sick, stay home with us. We have to try to eliminate the spread. We can't prevent it, but we can eliminate the spread. And that's the important part.
We can mitigate the spread for sure. Wash your hands. Keep your hands away from your face. I mean, all those things have been well documented.
Darla, do you have any questions or comments? Darla?
I'm here. I'm here. I had to set it unmute. I just want to say thank you for all the hard work. I know everybody's put in a lot of hours and a lot of hard work. And I'm, I'm thinking, you know, there's no, there's no answer that's going to please everybody. But I hope everybody knows that all this hard work has been put in. It's been for the, what everybody's got their student in mind first and foremost.
Yeah, I just got one thing. And for me, I just, this is kind of close to my heart. It was one of the emails that we received where the lady, the parent, was obviously very upset and does not think that it's going to be safe to allow this kid to attend the schools with somebody's... And I think some of the parents in her neighborhood felt the same way. And her email was that she understood that she really appreciated the option. How can she help coordinate, help the neighbors in the neighborhood? And we were able to connect her with the person in that neighborhood and they are working on it. And to me, that's close to the heart of bringing the team together and stepping up and saying, hey, you know what? We're providing options, but we're in this together. Let's help each other out. And to me, I just felt like I needed to share that because it was like on the back of my mind every day this week. Hey, here's where we're at together as a community. This is where we need to be. Let's come together. And that's what that lady's doing. To me, that's...
And while, while we can't guarantee that in every scenario, we will certainly look at that. If we have, you know, and I'm just using this as an example, you know, five fifth-grade students in Chattahoochee River Club that go to Haw Creek Elementary and they all opted for virtual, you know, we will try our best to make sure those kids are, are together so that those families might be able to share. You know, they might decide for them to come to a particular home on one day and social distance and learn together. So those are the types of things our staff, I'm telling you, and Darla said this and I so appreciate it. The staff here is bending over backwards to try to provide customer service for every single child in our school system. And it is a lot of work. I've got staff members here who forfeited all of their vacation this summer so they could focus on this so that we're prepared to open on August 6th. And, you know, in return for that, we're going to have Frolov Days next year. You know, it's sad. It's unfortunate to me that that's the situation. But it speaks volumes to the dedication and commitment for the folks who work at Forsyth County Schools and I could not be more proud of them.
You know, Sarah Taylor's Department's special editor, she's often been talking about it. I think that's how they work.
So with that, without any more questions, I would recommend approval of our guidelines for students and staff for the 2021...
Is there any public comment or is this just...
No, sir, there's not.
Do you have a recommendation? Do you have a motion? Has Tom all in favor? Darla?
Yeah. Yeah.
Give the analysis.